Okay. Are we all ready? Fran, are you putting your camera on?
I am, but I, oh, you know what? I was trying to log into a different, different account. I'm sure this is fine. Yes, it just doesn't have my name.
Your name's up there. Oh, I see. There we go. All right. You feeling ready here? Okay. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And if you would join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberate, and just as one. Thank you. Okay. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. March 10th trustee meeting, the March 27 workshop meeting, and the April 3 special workshop meeting. Has everyone had a chance to? Well, I guess most of you weren't at any of these meetings. So for those of us who were, are you guys comfortable approving the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or edits?
No, they looked good to me.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Oh, sorry. Any abstentions? Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Could you do the April 3 ones as well?
Yes, I intended to do all three. Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Great. Okay. And now the next item is the public hearing for the budget. If I can have a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move it.
I heard a move and a second over there. Was that you, Fran?
Mm-hmm.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Aye.
Okay. So we are now talking about the annual budget. Just to clarify, our budget starts from 1st and goes to May 31st. I did prepare a page just because I realized it can be sometimes confusing about the elected officials' annual pay. I did not make copies, but I will make copies. But just to go through that, the village justice has an annual, receives annual pay of $20,000. The mayor receives $13,620. The deputy mayor receives $10,000, and the trustees receive $8,000. So that is reflected in the budget. All of those are in the general fund. If you look, I believe it was last year. Because I, as mayor, spend time on all of the funds. I thought I should split it. But it became too confusing, and I didn't want to give the impression that we're trying to hide anything. So we put it all back in the, in the general fund. And then we filed our tax cap form with the state comptroller's office this morning. We were required to wait 10 days before we officially adopt our budget. So we're going to go through the budget today. But we will officially adopt the budget at our workshop meeting on April 24. So starting with the general fund, the newer form that you have, there are just a couple of changes. The property tax is the tax cap amount. We do not go over the tax cap limit. It is strangely enough, a 2% tax cap isn't always 2%, so it's actually 2.2%. And the one thing, the two things that I did for adjustments for income in the draft budget that I presented, was presented in March, there was no section for the town share of a low sap audit. That has now been included. I rounded a couple of things. And then the town portion of the workers' compensation for the fire department, when you get to the expense part, this fiscal year, workers' compensation for the fire department was $65,000. That is quite high, and that's not a typical year. Last year, there were several workers' compensation claims. There have not been any this year. And so I'm making the assumption that that 65 is too high. So I did reduce that. It's still on the higher side of every other year, but I did reduce that amount, which is why the town pays 75% of the workers' compensation for the fire company. And so that's why that went down. On the expense side, the significant, there are two significant changes, well, three. So one is the assumption for the fire department workers' compensation. It went from 65, I put it at 40,000. Last year, it was at 33. So I, we will know in June. So if we have to make an adjustment, we will be able to do that early on in the budget. And I did get numbers for the medical insurance. And it went up. We cover the deductible for our full-time employees. Newer hires pay a portion. They contribute to their health insurance. But how much everyone's going to use of the deductible is variable each year, so we've made an assumption. And so it comes out to be roughly an 8% increase. The other change is that the retirees that we have are now Medicare age. And so we are now, Medicare is now primary, and Medicare Advantage is covered by the village. And, ah, the other, I believe, is this the one? Nope, I think that's it. And then just going back to the revenue, there is, there is a portion of fund balance that's put into the revenue. We are at the, and I apologize, I don't have the specific number. Our fund balance policy has us between 15 and 25% of our budget. And we are at the high side of that. So $37,000 is going to keep us, we are still, we will still be well within the tax cap percentage. So that, those are the only changes as it relates to the general fund budget. All right. Let me go through all three and then open it up for questions or comments. For the water fund budget, only two changes. One is what we have been doing for the water fund is the operator also supplies the day-to-day work since we are shifting to our internal employee will be, is doing the day-to-day. And the operator is the overseer and consultant. So having consulted with some folks as to what our ongoing rate should be, I took the operator portion from 24,000 to 20,000. Oops, sorry. Thank you. And then the other is reflecting the medical insurance increase that we have. I increased that amount in the water fund just a bit. Otherwise, it stays the same. And then for the sewer fund, based on what we know so far about the sewer, I just, I rounded up for the per serve. So it says sanitary sewer per serve. That's payroll. That's what that means. Per service is apparently the way the municipalities or the state comptroller likes to reference payroll. Repairs and maintenance, I increased that budget. And lab sampling, I increased that budget because clearly we're going to need more of that. And we will likely need to do some further adjustments once we have a better sense of, sorry, I'll pay more attention.
Keep talking.
Once we have a better sense of what our ongoing costs will be. And obviously, we have some costs right now that throw in April. So we have April and May. We have April and May to cover the work that we're doing right now. So those are the changes from the original proposed budget. With that, happy to, this is a public hearing, so happy to open the public hearings. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please just stand up, state your name. Just give us a sense of what street you live on. Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Hi, I'm Kat Viega. I live at 20 Cambridge Drive in the Red Hook Estates. I had a question that kind of overlaps both the sewer and the water with the inter-fund transfer. I know we talked briefly about it at another meeting with $30,000 going to that line. But I also noticed that the same thing happened this current year with $30,000 going, and the year prior with $25,000 going. So if this seems to be a pattern that's going to continue, why isn't the budget just allocated differently? Because it seems to me like water people who are paying into it that don't have sewage services should not have their revenue going towards that service. I'm also looking at the rules around that because I know you had said it was within limits of the district. But what I saw through the comptroller opinions was that sewage is supposed to be for everyone in the village, for that to apply. And if we're not all getting it, I'm not sure if that transfer is valid. So I was just wondering, is that plan to continue? And why is that happening versus budgeting appropriately or charging sewage customers?
So just a couple of things as it relates to that. One, because the meeting where you asked that question, that wasn't something that was on my mind at that moment. So a couple of things. We do, we do provide our annual financial report to the state comptroller's office every year, and they review it and accept it. So if, from that standpoint, we also have an auditor who audits. I will say they've been exceedingly slow, and we were behind in our audits. But we do have an auditor who has reviewed that and has determined that it is a legitimate, it is, it is not something, we are not doing something that we are not allowed to do. The other is that the goal of the sewer system is to both provide the opportunity for additional economic development, for a more thriving business district, which does, does actually impact in a positive way the whole village. And also because we sit on an aquifer by collecting and not leaving even a portion of the sewer treatments to be individual, it should have a long-term positive impact on protecting the water supply. I will say that when we did the sewer project, we, we actually did find, I'm trying to think of the right number. It was more than one, less than 10 sewer systems that were actually seeping into the ground. So there should be a positive impact in terms of mitigating the potential contamination of the, of the water supply. So all of those things, the intention is to right-size it all. Part of it is we're still learning what it costs us to run the sewer system. And certainly today, it's not the best day to figure out what that cost is because we're not operating it appropriately and consistently. So on the other side, we will have a better sense of what, of what the costs are. And then, and then we will adjust the budget appropriately.
Can I ask one follow-up question?
Sure.
If it looks like though it's been taken consistently for the last three years, why hasn't that been allocated differently going forward? If it seems like it's kind of like a need that's going to continue under that budget line?
Well, if you think about it, there's been a lot of changes in the last three years. So the construction, so first, we took on the Red Hook Commons wastewater treatment plan in 2021. So that was new to us. And then in 2022 was the beginning of the construction. And then 2023, we had a, we had a full second, second plant. And so we're really only a year and a half into operating both plants. So we're still learning, learning the process and how, and what the costs are. Because it, because we are the individual septic tanks, we need to, we pump those out, sorry, losing my words. We pump those out. Normally, in the first year, you don't, you don't pump them out because they're brand new. So how often we will need to do that, et cetera, is still something that we're, we're getting our, getting our handle on. So it is, while it feels, while three years feels like a long time, it's actually not that long in the process of the village taking on, taking on new aspects of wastewater treatment plan.
And if it seems like it is going to continue to need that fund from water, will you decide going forward in future years to charge sewer customers more versus continuing to take from the water budget?
So I think it'd be best to focus on this year. And this is where we're at this year. Certainly something that will, I expect you'll be back next year, and we'll have that conversation. Anybody else have a comment they'd like to make about the budget? Suppose we could take anybody online if they want to wave their, wave their hand? Not seeing any. Okay. Trustees, any trustees have any questions? I realize that this is the joy of the timing is we have two new trustees who are thrown into a budget where you're just getting a chance to get your feet wet and finding out what your mailbox code is and the like. So happy to take any questions you guys might have or comments or... You're not required to, but I guess I can also just share that I think these, there's, there's nothing particularly outstanding about these budgets. As I mentioned at the, at the workshop, we completed union negotiations for both the police and the DPW. The DPW went from managing the highway and the water treatment, water plant. And now they added a whole nother system. So there was a... They did some work on it. They managed the water. Yes, okay. I'm just saying that we added a whole nother, a whole nother department. And so there was, there was a jump in what they got paid, which I think we all felt was very appropriate. We have an extraordinary DPW foreman who we were very fortunate to have. And the police department is taking on more contracts. And we have been adjusting those contracts with the town, the school, and Tivoli to make sure that we are appropriately charging them for the cost that they incur. I will say, on the income side, it may not look like those contracts are going up quite as much as they might be. For the school contract, last year's school contract, they divided it by 12. So we were paid in June and July and August. This year, they went to 10 months. So there's, there's a timing. So the increase is actually higher than it looks like in the budget because it just so happened that we had to make that switch. But, and the police certainly are an important aspect of our municipal budget. And they are, they are expensive. And then otherwise, it's basic maintenance of the streets. I will say this is a tough moment to talk about maintenance of streets because certainly, certainly Route 9 and 199 are kind of a mess. Those are sadly state routes. And so we are in touch with, our DPW foreman is in touch with the state DOT to ask when they're going to come and fill in their potholes. And we're putting together a list to fill in our own. But yeah, and then in terms of water, it's pretty much steady-as she goes. And sewer is, we have some significant things to fix in our operations. And then we are, I anticipate that we will then, then move to steady-as she goes.
I know it's just a draft, and we talked about some of the things that had popped up earlier in my head. One of the things, like, I know we're going to sort of go through. But I noticed the contract for Binny is on here, just to make a note. And we had mentioned putting in a water bottle, water bottle refillation.
Yes.
We would be canceling that contract and saving us some money.
Absolutely.
So just acknowledging it's a work in progress, but that one popped up to me. And then also, I was wondering, since we're moving the wastewater treatment plant day-to-day in-house, are we expecting an increase in apparel for a suggested PPE for our workforce to protect themselves and the family members? And I'm not sure if that would be under general apparel.
So the apparel, the apparel is in the general fund. So that, that would be primarily for the work they do with the garbage collection, brush hauling, et cetera. The PPE for the sewer is in the sewer budget. It's probably under supplies. So the PPE that we have been purchasing is falling under supplies.
Are you listening to this?
In the sewer budget.
Okay. So we're not expecting an increase in that with the additional additive PPE since it's projected to go downward?
I mean, we've been, we've been purchasing a fair amount of PPE. So I think, you know, having a similar amount is at the moment. Aside from, you know, I don't, we just need a quantity of it. I don't know that it's got it. I don't think we're at the point where we need the husband suits.
And then the other one, we have for the grants for us an income empty right now, and we should be receiving the county grant that got awarded. We'll get installments most likely in the upcoming fiscal year?
Yes.
I'm not sure how that would work into the projection of that or not.
That's true for the language access grant also. And basically, the way that, the way that's going to work is whatever comes in income is going to be in expense. So rather than trying guests, I just let both go up.
Perfect. Thank you.
At least in language access, it's a reimbursement. So we can't count it as income.
I think they all are. I mean, I, because the compost one is also the...
Yeah. So you can't count it as income until you've spent it.
Doesn't mean we can't project.
Yeah, you could project, sure.
But, because, yeah. We're, I mean, spending is projected to. Any other questions, comments?
Hi. One more.
Sure.
I've been asking kind of regularly, even to the prior administration in this one, when the Red Hook Estates neighborhood is going to get fully repaved because it's like totally crumbling in some parts. I realized there were some budget things with like COVID that offset stuff for a while. Is that slated for this next year? Or is there a plan in the near future to do that neighborhood?
So I don't, I don't, I don't think you've gotten the, the update. The last, so the process, we're hoping for our CHIPS allocation, which, I forget what CHIPS stands for. H is highway in there. Something highway improvement. And we should get a, we should get an allocation with a new budget. Of course, the state budget hasn't been passed yet, so we don't know what it is. But we use our CHIPS allocation to plan our paving. So last year's CHIPS funding, we didn't spend because cherry engravings were paved as part of the water project. So I think we have about $96,000 in this year's CHIPS funding without the next allocation. I do know that not, part of Cambridge was paved last year.
A couple of them.
Two years ago. There is a significant section of Cambridge that I know is on the foreman's list. And I believe it's on the top of the list.
Oh, for this coming year?
For this coming year.
Okay.
I don't think, it will not be all of Cambridge. It will not be all of Red Hook Estates. But there's definitely a section that's particularly to add. I think there's a section up on Tower Street that is also, I can't remember if it's Tower or Margaret. Probably, at the next meeting, we will have, we will have kind of nailed down what, what the plan is. If we've received our next CHIPS allocation, then we'll be able to go farther down the list. If we haven't, then we'll, we'll stick with the, with the top. The hardest part about paving is it's very expensive, and it's by square foot. So you can only do, you can only do so. We can only do so much each year. But yeah, you know, Cambridge is, you're getting closer to the top. And hopefully, hopefully, a portion of it will be done, a good portion of it will be done this year. All right. Any other, last, last chance. I'm going to take a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you. Second?
Who is?
Yes.
Second?
That was Kim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So as I mentioned in the beginning, we, we do have a resolution to pass the budget, but we're going to wait until the, we're going to wait until the workshop to actually do that. The only reason why anything would change is if there's some significant information that comes in in the meantime. Otherwise, we're going to pass this budget. What I should have started with is budgets are living documents, and we adjust them as, as things come at us. So there will certainly be adjustments throughout the year. But this gives us a basis to start with for, for next year. Okay. All right. Now into regular business. First item on the agenda is, we've had a request for a, to waive the 30-day advance notice for a liquor license for Bliss Juice Cafe. I believe if I'm understanding correctly how this works is if we do not approve this, then they have to wait 30 days. If we do, then we, I believe the village clerk signs it and sends it to the liquor authority, and then they waive that 30 days. I'm not sure what the date was that they applied in the first place. But in any case, that's literally what this is all about. I think you may know that Bliss is the store that took over on the corner where Annabelle's was. If you haven't been, I highly recommend it. Even if just to go in and look inside, it's beautiful. They did a lovely job. It's really quite a lovely space. So I would take a motion to approve waiving a 30-day notice.
So moved.
Who was that?
I don't know.
Was that Fran? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mal Corca. Any questions, comments?
What's the purpose of the 30-day waiting period? Is it to establish that the business is thriving? Is it verifying that maybe a history or...
My understanding is that it's the municipality in question, wherever they are starting some time to comment.
In case there are community objections.
Yeah.
Got it. And as you might imagine, a larger community might not know every business the way we do. Quite so intimately. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. The next item is, this is something related to the New York State retirement system, local retirement system. They require that we identify what a standard workday is. And so the village clerk, the typist, is actually the civil service title for Laura Hart, who is our building clerk and our police clerk. And the treasurer and the court clerk all have a standard workday of seven hours. And then laborer, the DPW, and the police officers, their standard hour day is eight hours. And so that's what's listed on your, on this resolution for employees. So I will, I will take a motion to approve this resolution of our, of our standard workday.
So moved to Amy.
Moving to Amy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions?
I'm just still trying to find it.
No, no. It looks like this.
Yes, I, let's see.
There you go.
Thank you.
I had an extra one. Maybe that was yours. Any, any other questions or comments?
I have a question, actually.
Sure.
So does this establish when overtime kicks in? Or is that still based on 40 hours?
As far as I understand, it's still based on 40 hours.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. All right. Next item is the village budget. So we're going to, we're going to go pass that. And we're going to move on to the reorganization resolution. So this is, this is our annual meeting, our reorg, I guess, our reorganization meeting, where we reestablish all manner of things. So I'm just going to read the resolution because it covers a whole lot of things. This is a resolution to broad form of consolidated reorganization. Whereas the Board of Trustees has received and reviewed the various annual reorganization documents, including the meeting schedule, official newspaper, and the mayor's appointees of officers' designations with any new appointments listed, which you'll see farther down in this resolution. Whereas under Village Law 3-3013, the mayor must appoint, with board approval, offices of clerk, treasurer, deputy clerk, associate justice, and members of boards. And whereas the board has determined that the Village Law 4-41232 requires the designation of banks of trust... of banks of trust companies for the deposit of all village monies. And whereas the board is determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to village officials and employees who use their personal automobiles while performing official duties. And whereas the board is determined to authorize payment in advance of audit claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges. And whereas all such claims must be presented at the next regular meeting for audit. Whereas the claimant and the officer incurring or approving the claim are jointly and severably liable for any amount the Board of Trustees disallows. Whereas there is to be held during the coming official year, three NICOM, four NICOM trainings and the following county association meetings. Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayors Association, Dutchess County Planning Association, Dutchess County Transportation Council. Whereas attendance by certain municipal officials and employees at one or more of these meetings, conferences, or schools benefits the municipality. Whereas the Board of Trustees is meeting in person on April 14, 2025. Whereas the board is aware of the existing ethics code and procurement code, otherwise known as the purchasing policy. It's not quite right. As embodied in our code law and is reminded of same, you all have copies of those in your packets. Whereas the board intends to complete the annual reorganization with consolidated voting and move to other business. Now therefore be it resolved. The board approves the mayor's appointments as listed below. Deputy clerk, one-year term ending April 6, 2026, Diana Devens. Deputy registrar of vital statistics, Diana Devens. Zoning Board of Appeals, five-year term, David Jevskakis, term ending April 8, 2030. Martin Relling, term ending April 8, 2030. Committees will not be reappointed at this time. They will carry over for one month, at which time we will address appointments. The board designates the following institutions as depositories of all monies received by the village treasurer, clerk, and receiver of taxes. Name of institutions, Key Bank and M&amp;T Bank. And the board will approve reimbursement to such officers and employees at the current federal IRS rate per mile in effect at the time of the trip. And the board authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges. All such claims must be presented at the next regular meeting for audit. And the claimant and the officer incurring or approving the claims are jointly and severably liable for any amount the Board of Trustees disallows. And the board acknowledges review and familiarity with the ethics code and procurement code of the Village of Red Hook. And that the following officers and employees are authorized to attend the following schools/ meetings, subject to budget availability, with preference to those who have not previously attended. Mayor, Board of Trustees, clerk, treasurer to the NICOM Winter Legislative Meeting, Annual Meeting and Training School, and Full Training School. Mayor, Department of Work, Public Works Foreman, NICOM's Public Works Training School. Mayor, Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayors, Dutchess County Transportation Council. I'm actually going to add to that deputy mayor. And deputy mayor. Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals members. Planning Board, zoning clerk, Dutchess County Planning Association. The board appoints the Daily Freeman, also known as Media News Group, as the official newspaper. And renews the meeting schedule as follows. All meetings are held in Village Hall and are open to the public. Village of Red Hook Justice Court, first Wednesday at 6:00 PM. Village of Red Hook Criminal Court, third Wednesday, 3:00 PM. Planning Board, second Thursday at 6:30 PM. Zoning Board of Appeals, fourth Thursday at 6:30 PM. The following committees will remain until next month, when the committees will be renewed, reviewed, and reauthorized. Communication Committee, first Wednesday, 1:30. Events Committee, second Tuesday, 6:00 PM. Human Relations Committee, first Thursday, 7:00 PM. Public Spaces Initiatives, fourth Saturday at 10:00 AM. Village Green, second Sunday of April, July, September, and January at 6:00 PM. And Climate Smart Community Task Force, third Thursday at 4:00 PM. Village Board of Trustee Meetings, these will all be the second Monday of the month at 7:00 PM, except for October, because the second, the second Monday in October is a holiday. So we will do it the first Monday, which is October 6. And in November, the second Monday in November, I will be away. So I'm taking the liberty of moving that to the following Monday, which is November 17th. All the others are on the second, second Monday. And then the Village Board Workshops, the next two, so April and May, will be on the fourth Thursday. Starting in June, the meetings will be on the fourth Monday. And that is true for the remainder of the, of the year through March of next year. And those are at 7:00 PM. And the real reason to move those is currently we have a, we have a sort of structural conflict with the Zoning Board of Appeals. They don't always meet, but when they do, we need to be upstairs in the conference room. And that really is kind of a tight space. So we're finding that having, having a regular meeting where it's much easier for us to create the space and for the public to, to join us makes sense. And those are the items on here. And now it also occurs to me that, do I need to reappoint my deputy mayor?
No.
No? Okay.
You can change at any point, but you do not need to reappoint.
Okay. Thank you.
Not that that was... That was not.
I'm sweating. Yeah.
Does the other work get reopened? Is there anybody up for appointment for Plankton?
Not, 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 not including that in tonight's, in tonight's resolution. So I will take a motion to approve. So moved. Thank you. Mel Corca, second?
Second.
Thank you, Fran. Questions, comments?
Is there a typo? This is supposed to be severably.
Where are you?
Twice it says jointly and severally. Severably.
Oh, severably?
I think that's what we put in ours, but.
Highly possible.
Yeah.
All right. So instead of severally, severably?
Yeah. It's severably. There's two.
Yes. Got it? Thank you very much.
Sure.
Where is that?
Second page? It's twice.
Yeah. This is basically.
One, two, three, four. Count the fifth, whereas from the bottom.
This is all about if, if we pay something before the Board of Trustees approves.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Cool. I'll just make sure that I approve it before you do that. Thank you.
What is the resolution number?
It is number eight.
Thank you. Can you write it in the little blank spots? Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Did I get all ayes? Any opposed? Any extensions? And just to clarify, the ethics code has a variety of items, including gifts. And the, no gifts having a value of 75 or more are to be accepted. And conflict, it references conflict of interest, et cetera. And then procurement policy is how we go about purchasing things. And the, the, the point is, is to make sure that we are getting appropriate quotes, to make sure that we are paying, that we are paying a fair price for what, that we are not paying too high for what we buy. And I will just acknowledge our village clerk, Jen Kavanaugh, has done a terrific job in finding alternatives and making sure we're on the state contract or purchasing from the state contract and has definitely saved the village money over time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Local law A. So we had our public hearing. And we, we closed that public hearing at our last board meeting. So I have in front of us a resolution to adopt Local Law 1 of 2025 entitled a local law to adopt a new chapter, 61, entitled Standing Committees of Village Board of the Village Code. The entire substance of the law is at its annual organizational meeting of each year or throughout the year, as the need may require, the Village Board of Trustees by resolution shall establish the standing committees of the board and shall prescribe the functions and duties thereof and may discontinue or abolish any standing committee. The purpose of this, there's not a lot of law around municipal committees. And our village attorney, and so basically, it says you can establish them and remove them by local law or by resolution. What our attorney had recommended was if we pass a law saying that the way we're going to do it is by resolution, we've sort of covered our bases. And a resolution is a less onerous process. And since they are committees and they get re, reauthorized every year, it seemed like resolutions was the right way to go. And this way, it makes it clear how we're going to do that. So that was the purpose of doing this law. I know there was, we've, it, it, we've had some discussions about what committees do, what they should do. The law says that any village committee or any municipal committee, the only authority it has is the authority that the board has given it. So it really is an extension of the board. And it appears, as we look back on several of our committees, that they've never been authorized by resolution. So they've never actually been given authority, frankly, to function. And that seems rather odd. So that's why we're in the process of reviewing all of our committees. Always a good opportunity to say, are these the committees that we want to have? Is this the direction that the board wants to go? Most committees are advisory. If you think about it, the, the board enacts things. And if we have a committee that says, here, we've done some additional research and some additional work, and we recommend that you consider either a new law or an adjustment or something of that nature. So that is the majority of what municipal committees do. And again, in looking at it more carefully. So that is why we frankly don't need this law. It just clarifies how we're going to do it. We can, we actually have, the Village Green is in our code. There are other committees that were just formed without, I don't know if we have any other committees that have been formed by resolution. So that's just trying to get up to speed with what we, how we should be doing it. So with that, I guess I'll ask if you all would like to proceed to enact this law? Or would like to, I mean, again, we can always establish committees by resolution. There's nothing that says we can't. This just sort of clarifies how we're going to do it.
I'd like to move forward.
I would like to also.
Okay. Well, can I take that as a, as a motion and a second?
Sure.
To approve the resolution, which would be the resolution under nine? Any questions, comments? I can, I can just point out that a environmental review is required. This clearly won't have any impact on the environment. So it's indicated that it's determined to be a type-two seeker action, which does not require any further, any further environmental review. Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
I had a question about, so with the committees, how will we decide how the commit, how like, do we go and do like an audit of all of the committees and how, how are they each reviewed?
So it's, it's really going to be a sort of a combination of things. I don't know that we've laid out a full plan. I know I've had a couple of conversations with different committee chairs so far. And the, it'll end up being creating a resolution to bring to the board. And perhaps at our workshop meeting, we can have more of that conversation around what committees we have, what is a, how, how they have been functioning, and how we might, we might like to see that going forward.
And then I have a question, follow up on that. Is, I must, because we're going to be, I know like for this one, there's, we have a handful of committees that haven't been formed by resolution yet. So is it going to be like for this first round, a resolution for this committee, a resolution for this committee? Or they're just going to be lumped into one resolution where we name them and then say, so like Village Green is responsible for tree plant deeds in accordance to following the Tree City application and et cetera, et cetera? If we decide to move forward on like other committees, what their mission is, what their, like how, what's, what's the process for this? Because I know we're all trying to sort of like short it on that page and...
Well, again, there, there, there's no process that's laid out. So I think it's up to us. My preference would be a separate resolution for each committee. Because I think that by lumping them all together, then if we pull one out, it, you know, so I think each, and as many as we can do, as quickly as we can do them. If we can't get them all done all at once, there's, there's no, there's no immediate requirement that we, that we follow in any particular way, if that makes sense. But yeah, my preference would be a separate resolution for every committee. Because I think that'll just make it easier to designate. But excellent question. Part of it is we're sort of making it up as we go along. But, but I think that's, it's logical to designate each committee separately. Any other questions or comments? I'm going to take a roll call vote on this one then. I'll do Deputy Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Trustee Bradley Ricard.
Aye.
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Trustee Buku.
Aye.
And I'm an, I'm an aye also. Thank you very much. Okay. The next item is related to the Red Fire Company contract. So a little bit of history. The, we, the last contract that we did ended in May 31st of 2023. So we have been operating under an extension of that contract since then. I have met with the fire company several times. In the meantime, I think I've reported on it over time. And I recently, and I had, given all the time that was passing, I had recommended at a meeting I had with them not that long ago, that we, what I'm working with them on is we are required to get their financial statements, et cetera. And, and so what I had recommended was that we take the amount that we had given them and, and just do that for the two years of this contract. And that amount is $120,305. And so they had indicated that they were in agreement with that. And so the contract, the agreement, draft agreement that you have in front of you is literally the same contract that we have done with them in the past. And the only change is the dollar amount that we are authorizing to give them. If you'll note, there are two, two addendums that just acknowledge the additional, the additional support that we give to the fire company. The DPW does mow and plow their, will mow around their solar panels and plow their parking lot. The solar, they have their own solar panels that supply their solar. And then we provide them with cancer insurance, workers' compensation, LOSAP administration. And LOSAP is Length of Service Award Program. The LOSAP funds are managed by RBC. So there's a cross to that. And then there's a contribution, a benefit of contribution that we do, as well as a reserve fund that was established two contracts ago. So that is, that is the proposed contract. We are required by law to have a public hearing. So what we need to do tonight is set the public hearing. So there's a resolution in your packet, which would be number 10. That just, it's a resolution to set public hearing for fire company agreement. Whereas the Village of Red Hook desires to contract with the Red Hook Fire Company for fire services. Whereas Section 4-4129B of the Village Law requires a public hearing for any contract for fire service with an incorporated fire company. Whereas the next monthly meeting of the Village Board is April 24, 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board will schedule a public hearing on the Red Hook Fire Company agreement on April 24, 2025. It's 7:05. And the village clerk will publish notice in the village newspaper. That is the extent of the resolution. May I have a motion?
So moved, Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Second.
That sounds like Fran.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. I was just a late aye, sorry.
Any extensions?
I'm an aye also.
Okay. Thank you very much. There's that. Okay. The Town Water Customer Contract. I, I'll just apologize. There's still some language in there that is a mixture of the prior contract with tradition and mighty donuts. This contract is intended, intended for a single-family home. And I thought I had gone through it all and cleaned it up, and I didn't. So the substance of, of the contract will remain the same, but there are some, there's some extra, as Kim noted, there's some repeats. Some places, the meter is referred to as a master meter, which isn't... Some places, the meter is referred to as a master meter, which isn't correct. So I, I will tidy it up and send it out to you probably later this week so that we can, you can look at it. And for those of you who actually read it in gory detail, the new one will be very similar and just be simple. I got it down to six pages, so eleven, I think this one is. So my apologies, as I say, I thought I had tidied that up. We have already approved to give them water. And this is just clarifying what the contract, contractual agreement will be. The next item on the agenda. We, we needed, the sewer operator had requested a refrigerator for the sewer plant. And it turns out that Bard has a program called FreeCycle. And there was a refrigerator that was in their FreeCycle. I don't know, where is it, location where that?
They have a building.
Okay, so we remain aware of a refrigerator that was in the Bard FreeCycle. And we have acquired said refrigerator. For those of you who've been in Village Hall for the last week and a half, it's been sitting in the lobby. And it has an estimated value of $40. And so just because we're supposed to acknowledge and accept donations, I'll take a motion to accept the donation from Bard FreeCycle of the used mini refrigerator.
So moved.
I'll go second.
You can fight it out on the very outside. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay. All right, the next item. So we have not yet passed our event permit law, but we have, but we, we have been moving towards it. And hopefully at the next meeting, we will have the law worked out. There's some details that we need to still work out. But in the meantime, we've been asking people who wanted to do events to fill out the form that was created and also to give us, the board, an opportunity to review and, and approve said items. So I don't know which way you have them. But we'll start with the Pride, with the Pride Parade and Festival. So this is, Beckhook Pride is the name of the organization, correct? And last year, it was a parade and a few events here in, in the, in the village parking lot. And this year, Beckhook Pride would like to do a more substantive festival. I think from our standpoint, it doesn't change dramatically in that it will still be the stage and the tent. There was a request, so the timing is from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So I think it's a little longer than it was last year, is that right?
Yes.
And there was a request for alcohol. But in reviewing that, at this point, we're thinking that that's for all events in the village parking lot, that if there's going to be alcohol, it would be in the evening. And so we, I did cross that part out on the, on the form. Otherwise, the date is a Sunday, June, June.
22nd.
Help me out, 22nd. And I believe it's Sunday because Saturday is graduation day for the high school, for the Red Hook High School. So for those of you who haven't made a note of that day, this will be a big weekend. So I'd love to get a mo, and obviously the details, the parade route is similar to last year. It'll just start at the high school instead of the middle school. There'll be some additional details to work out. The police lieutenant would like to have a meeting, so we just need to schedule that. Everything else is pretty standard. And so would love to, I guess, get a motion to.
Can I ask a question first?
Of course.
So there's nothing filled in for the fee schedule. And before, just given that we've got now multiple things that would be a considerable police department because of the parades, I would just like to have an idea of what is our limit for the year? I mean, I know this is something we need to, to go through with the permits. I'm chair of the events committee. So we have not actually determined. We can't do everything.
And thank you for, thank you for bringing that up. Because what we've talked about is to identify a budget line item for salary that supports events. And so in thinking about, so this one will be in the next fiscal year. And we have certain events that we know, this, this one, again, it's not, not new this year. Apple Blossom Day, Memorial Day Parade.
And this.
Hardscrabble Day, Halloween Parade. We will get to that. Veterans Day, that'll be in this fiscal year though. Though Veterans Day doesn't really take much, that really doesn't take much from village resources. So the idea is to figure out what, how to identify what the cost, what the village is contributing for those events and how to determine, how best to determine ways to support those events in a fair and equitable way. And so we're not there yet. And I think that, I believe that last year, we asked for, if the group wanted to use the, I believe it was picnic tables? Because those really do deteriorate with use. And I think that we had waived the fees for the other items last year. So that would be my proposal, that we would do that, do the same for this one.
I'm not worried about the equipment, sorry, so much as the. I just want to make sure that going forward, we, like you said, we do it in a fair and equitable way. I know there's some legacy events that probably have expectation. I want to make sure that we balance new and legacy and, and don't bankrupt ourselves trying to do everything.
And one thing I've thought also is perhaps we can come up with a sort of a minimum of, you know, this is what the village will contribute. And if you want to do something over and above, then you need to pay for the difference maybe?
Yeah.
As a way to, as a way to do that.
So yeah, that's, if we're approving these, or approving anything, are we? And there's no fees written in. Are we approving later doing fees or?
So for the 2025 Pride Parade and Festival, I would like to be, make it clear that for this one, we are going to waive the fees except for the picnic tables, as we did last year. But that doesn't mean that we won't come back and, and have, and establish fees on an equitable basis for all events going forward. But I think, given the time.
So we should write that in, picnic tables?
Yes, we should. I've been through this many times and I.
I might just.
Find this form. Yes, you might. I'm assuming you want to use.
I mean, ask them because you're.
Or we can just say any, any picnic tables that are going to be used. I don't actually see them here.
They, they're not, they're in other.
They were having that, they were in a previous version of this one.
All right, so we'll just write any picnic tables, I think it was 25 per table?
I, I, that could be, right? It's typically 25 or 35, so, yeah, let's say it's 25.
It's 25. I'm pretty sure that's what it was. So any picnic table?
25 per table. We have a total of eight, providing they all survive the winter, okay? No promises.
I think they were kept in storage.
I was going to say, knowing, knowing our DPW home, that they're all right.
Yeah.
Warped after the first. Well, and then there's a container. Okay, so then we're going to be putting in 20, $200 plus or minus.
Yes, and it, yes. Again, it depends on how many tables.
I understand, that's why I put the question.
So do you want to, do you want to approve this one or go on to the next one? Or do you want to talk about the next one first?
I'm going to approve this.
So I'll, I'll take that as a motion. Wait a second.
Second.
Thank you, Fran. Any further questions, discussion?
I hope it's, it's a little cooler this year.
I was just thinking, I want to add, add a little, a little something for a beautiful day. And yeah, something less than 95 degrees would be good.
I will say, they are looking into a cooling tent this year due to the 100 degree weather of last year.
Yes, well, and it doesn't help that it's in the parking lot. That just sort of adds to the, adds to the joy. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great.
An abstain.
One abstention.
And one abstention. Kim, this is abstained. Terrific, I look forward to it. It was, it was a fun event last year.
Should be one again.
Okay, so the other one is a new item that came more recently. This is being referred to as Tour de Red Hook. I gather that this is an event that used to happen and is, excuse me, being revised. Basically a bike ride through the village of Red Hook. This is new to us as an event. There's a note on the application. It references tabling by Safe Routes to School Committee. That committee doesn't exist, so that's not going to, that's not going to happen. But we do have a Climate Smart Committee, we, it's Task Force. We do need to formally authorize it by a resolution. But I don't see any problem with having Climate Smart have a little table about how the climate is smart. Otherwise, the issue, so the authorizing organization, host organization is the library. And the route, the library director, Alex Geller, and I met with Patrick Lieutenant Hildenbrand to review the pathway. And the end pathway is what's on the last page. Originally, there was a thought to go through the four corners, et cetera, which was going to require a significant amount of police presence. The way it is now is it would start in the middle school, I believe is where it was, middle or high school, and one of those, go.
Start there, high school?
It's like high school, yeah. And then go over to Linden Avenue to Abrams Park, around the Cookingham Trails and back. And then those who want to go longer would then go down Benner, Garden and Phillips, back to, back to the middle school. And this way, it's just crossing the road at a couple of spots. So it doesn't require the same level of police, police presence. What I'm going to recommend, I think you'll see in the copies, I think I, I wrote it in before I made copies. Any police officer who's going to be working this is going to be on overtime. It'll be, it's a Sunday. And officers are four hour minimums. So an average cost is about $85. That's a mix of lieutenant, sergeant, part-time, full-time. So it looks like the, there should be a way to do this with two officers. It was recommended that Alex reach out to the fire companies to get some fire police to volunteer to, to support. With enough support, we can support it with two police officers, which would total $680. What I'm going to recommend is that we, the village, support this at the level of those two officers and $680. And if more are required, that we would request, that we would request that the library pick up the difference. I do know that they're speaking with the town of Red Hook to see if they might be willing to pitch in as well.
Can I say, just, the Tour de Red Hook did actually happen during COVID? I think it was 2020, Red Hook Mutual did it. It was a fundraiser that helped folks who were unhoused during COVID in our community. So I just wanted to like know what it was held previously and recently to benefit the community.
Now, I'm also assuming, so they're, they're not planning to have portable toilet facilities? I'm assuming that either there's planning to start at 9:30. People in theory will be on their bikes and then it'll be over 11:00. I don't know if, I don't know if that, I don't know if that's an issue?
Yeah, that might be an issue.
So we can highlight that as a question.
And the water, are they supplying water? Because that's going to be necessary.
So we can just add that that needs to be.
Right. Can I question the purpose, promoting or publicizing local government? It seems like we could do promoting tourism. I mean, how is this publicizing local government?
I, I think there were some, some, well, I don't know.
Well, I was going to say, maybe you can speak to that.
I can speak to that a little bit. One of the, one of the elements about this specifically looking at sort of the movements that the village wants to make towards being biker friendly and pedestrian friendly, especially looking at our younger generations, accepting that Red Hook is going to be, you know, we want to be accepting to like all ages, especially our kids. And part of this is bringing awareness about how to interact with our bikers and our pedestrians. It's something that the village has talked about moving forward, moving in some of our walkability and biker friendly initiatives that we have talked about going forward in relation to Climate Smart being there. One of the reasons why we were thinking of tabling is because it specifically speaks to pledge element number six, about having Climate Smart land use as well as biking and walking plans, which is moving initiatives forward through the village. And so I think it is in support of what we are trying to do for the future of making Red Hook more walker and micro friendly.
So when you table, you would be talking about that?
Yes. Cool. And reaching out to, that's where, or not that's where, but residents and seeing how, seeing members, how they, how they use the streets, what they'd like to see with the streets, just sort of getting some more information about and adding it to the stuff that we already have.
Can road bikes go on this?
I've not actually ridden that. Oh yeah? It's compact enough that road bikes can. I mean, if it's like the super skinny tire, it might get a little nefarious going through it. But it's compacted.
It'll be a little more shape.
Yeah.
It should be all right. Cool, that was just curious. Does anybody bike on the Cookingham Trails?
I have walked.
Oh yeah, well, there you go. So you, you've successfully navigated the trails.
My four and a half year old has as well.
So I have one question myself. Have we asked the library whether or not, they have a fundraising arm?
Yeah.
Whether or not the friends would possibly be able to fundraise for this amount? I'm not saying that against us, offsetting the cost for $680. But it will cut into our ability to do events in the future as well. So it's, I mean, just if there is a way that the taxpayer doesn't have to pay and it could be fundraising, that would be wonderful if that was an option. But I'm not saying that we shouldn't.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't ask that question, so I don't know. I think it's worth asking. I also think that this event, it's coming up quickly. It's May 4th. This is also an opportunity to sort of support it. And as we get a little more clear as to how we want to spend our, our events or celebration funding, we can just clarify if we're going to say that, you know, there's. And again, that's sort of what made me think about, is there kind of a minimum that, or a maximum even, that the village says, okay, for any event, we'll, we'll cover this and anything that you want to do above that, you'll need to fund? As, as one way of making sure that we're supporting different events.
So one of the things then is that approval of an event does not constitute making them a legacy event, for example, because we do have a section on this application that talks about that, so.
Yes, absolutely. This is a one-off. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
And that includes that the village will, will cover two officers, four hours and above that. Would take more.
And pending the water and the porta potty, just because if that's not our law, that's law that is.
Yeah, I think the water, I think the water is an easy thing to say that that's required. I think the porta potty or available toilet facilities is something that we'll, we'll look into and make sure that it's required. If there is a way to provide toilet facilities that don't require a porta potty, for example?
Yeah, it's just, it's the DDA thing, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely.
The woods are not a porta potty.
No, not for most of us.
And I will second it.
Okay, who, who, who motioned it?
Kim.
I have to go.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I, I don't believe I have an actual.
We need an application.
Application for Apple Blossom Day. Apple Blossom Day is, it is the same as last year, as it has been for many years. It will be tabling. It will be, they will have the stage and the tent. They will use picnic tables. And it's straightforward. So I apologize for not having. I thought I had one, honestly, and it just, I didn't find it in my pile when I went through. So just.
Do you have the date, top of mind?
I do, May 10th.
Saturday before March. It's okay.
Exactly. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Allstate Power Systems, which is, this is a preventative maintenance contract.
I think we can just table this to the next meeting.
What, Apple Blossom? Oh, it's already approved.
Okay.
It's a legacy event, so.
They are required to do an application?
Next, well.
No, I know, they will be.
Okay.
In our process. Yes. We're not going to just say we can't do, we don't have to do.
So the Allstate Power Systems, it's a preventative maintenance contract for our generators. We approved this in March, but they sent it to us for three units. We have one at the Red Hook Commons wastewater treatment plant, one at Village Hall, and one at the water treatment plant. We also have one at the new wastewater treatment plant that they have actually serviced for the past two years. But they did not include it in their contract. And so they have just sent me literally this small. And so they have just sent me, literally this morning, they sent me the updated contract neglecting to put in the number of units, four instead of three, so you can mark that. The three that we already approved, it's the same amount, and the new wastewater treatment plant is $875. So I am asking for a motion to authorize me to sign this contract. So moved. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. All right, so we need to set a special workshop meeting for May 13th. This is a meeting where the Indigenous History Project will be presented. Melkor, maybe you can share a little about that?
Yeah, it's a, it's called an Indigenous History Project Gathering. And the idea is that all the trustees and the mayor can all come to the, and ask any questions or suggest anything. And the public is, is welcome to come to, to us, May 13th, and it'll be here in the courtroom at 7:00 P.M. And the idea is that you hear a general history of the Indigenous people in this area, an explanation of the project, and that you can add anything that you think would be important to add to the project or consider, or if you have any questions. We basically want it to be a community conversation about.
And we need to set a formal meeting because multiple board members may have ideas. Otherwise, if we are a quorum, we're, we're not supposed to talk to each other, not supposed to talk business. So we want to make it a formal meeting, and it will certainly be open to the public. So I'll take a motion to set this special workshop meeting for May 13th at 7:00 P.M. Thank you, Kim. Second?
Second. Frank.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's the time again? Sorry.
7:00 P.M.
Seven.
And I'm just stating that the next meeting, we've got the workshop meeting on April 24th, and the next board meeting is May 12th. All right, now, now we move on to the department and committee reports, and we have another debut this evening with our new treasurer, Mary Bethie Phillips.
Good evening. As of March 31st, our bank account balances were as follows. In the general fund, we had $820,407.40. In the water fund, we had $349,772.37. In the payroll clearing account, we had $96,473.68. In the sewer fund, we had $73,413.31. Art Scrabble account held $5,994.48. In the village green account, we had $10,137.54. And our health insurance account held $13,087.93. For our reserve checking account balances were as follows. The fire departments held $10,495.56. Police department, $18,034.83. USDA held $146,743.13. The highway department held $602.22. Our snow reserve account held $3,465.35. Tower reserve held $18,715.25. Unemployment account held $7,423.59. Court reserve held $3,485.55. And our office reserve account held $1,027.63. As for our monthly expenses for March, they were in the general fund. We spent $243,229.27. At our water fund, we had expenses of $109,517.36. At our payroll clearing account, we had $3,448.53. And the sewer account, we had $238,676.94. And about $200,000 of that was our annual principal payment for our sewer project.
Wonderful. Any questions? Thank you very much. I'll take a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Thank you. Kim, second?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Mary Beth, you've survived your first, your first board meeting. Well done. Okay, now we're on to committee reports, department reports, starts with me. Red Hook Police Department, for the month of March, there are 310 incidents, 185 in the village of Red Hook, 114 in the town of Red Hook, and 11 in the village of Tivoli. Of that, 122 were water tower security checks. Uniform traffic tickets, there were 109. 60 in the village of Red Hook, 35 in the town of Red Hook, and 14 in the village of Tivoli. Parking tickets, there were 15 in the village of Red Hook, and none in the town of Red Hook or the village of Tivoli. Arrests, there were seven. Three in the village of Red Hook, two in the town of Red Hook, and two in the village of Tivoli. The next item, I know there might be a little confusion because it doesn't actually say what it is on the chart that you have. These are fire, this is from the fire incident report. We get, we get reports from the fire company, and just received January, February and March. And they come in categories, and so for the village only, in the month of January, there were 27. Of those 24 were EMS-type calls, three were hazards of some sort. In February, there were 16 calls, 13 of those were EMS, two were alarms, and one, oh, there's my little chart. My little chart. 500s are assisting invalid, let's frame really what the 500s are. And then March 20, total incidents, 12 of which were EMS-type calls, four were alarms, one fire, and two assisting invalids. Outside the village, there were 84 in January, 47 EMS-type calls, 21 alarms, three hazards, and 11 assist invalids, and two. Those tended to be dispatch and cancel on route, false alarm type things. February, there were 52, 35 were EMS, seven were alarms, nine were assist invalid, and one was false alarm. 72 were in March, 46 of which were EMS. 14 were alarms, two were fires, five were assist invalid, and five were false alarms. So we are running in, after the first quarter, 77% outside the village and 23% inside the village. So that's roughly where the, the town contributes 75% of the costs, except for the LoSat program, which we just increased. The town is picking up that full cost. So that's that piece. And then I had, just in, in general, I have my report of various things. I do want to start mentioning about the police department. On March 20th, School Resource Officer David Schmitz saved a Red Hook student from choking. And I have an email from Dr. Warden, the superintendent of the Red Hook Central School District. "I'm writing to express our profound gratitude for the outstanding dedication and swift action of our school resource officer, David Schmitz, whose life-saving response today made all the difference for one of our students. When a middle school student began choking, SRO Schmitz immediately performed the Heimlich maneuver, preventing what could have been a tragic outcome. His quick thinking, calm demeanor, and exceptional training quite literally saved a life. This moment serves as a powerful reminder of the invaluable role our SROs play in our schools. Their presence is not only about security, but also about care, vigilance, and a deep commitment to our students' well-being. We are incredibly fortunate to have such highly-trained and attentive officers as part of our school community. We will recognize SRO Schmitz at a Board of Education meeting, and we look forward to formally honoring him." They were going to do it in, at their April meeting, I believe they're going to do it at their May meeting. "Without SRO Schmitz's expertise and immediate response, today's outcome could have been very different. Thank you for your continued support in ensuring that our schools remain safe and caring environment for all." Thought it was important to share that thanks from the Red Hook Central School District. So thank you. The SROs are in the schools every day, and we don't always hear about what they do, so nice opportunity. I have actually watched the body camera footage, and he just noticed that something was off, and he went after the student and started asking if he was okay, and he couldn't talk, and so he, he said, "Are you choking?" And he went like this, and so he, it was, he had to Heimlich three times very strongly, so it was, it was well, well down there, whatever he was choking on. Okay, personnel. I just want to say a final thank you to trustee Charlie Lang for his years of service on the village Board of Trustees. And welcome to returning Deputy Mayor Melkor de Carvalho, and new trustees Frances Uku and Amy Smith. Welcome aboard. We have a reviewed and shifted around assignments, which you'll see in the agenda and as the reports are shared. In other personnel news, happy once again to welcome our newly-appointed village treasurer, Mary Bethie Phillips, who, as she now fully takes over from former treasurer Lori Urban, who has formally retired since our last meeting. Though I had a sighting of former treasurer today, I think she's.
I gotta help.
I even saw that out the window, so as we know, Lori is still a village resident, so. Regarding the Wea Water projects, those are all substantially complete. There are some small punch list items remaining. There is some financing that's remaining. We have received confirmation of the additional financing from EFC. We are waiting for a closing date, which may not be till June, and we, we will not be able to fully finalize those projects until then. Sewer project number one, the major outstanding item is the single audit. We are still waiting for the final audit from the audit firm. And there's still one final MWBE report from Carver Construction to be filed with EFC. The January through March 2025 report was filled out by Carver, but they didn't make a final report, so there will be one, at least one more. Sewer expansion phase two. "We continue to pursue grant funding for the sewer expansion. While the operation issues are significant, the timing for grant applications is such that we need to keep proceeding, or we will be put back at least a year. We can always turn down grants should our operations not return to compliance, though I am confident that we will be in compliance well before the grants are awarded. An income survey is in process, which has the potential to increase our chances of getting bipartisan infrastructure funding, assuming that funding is still available, and other grants as well. If you are contacted, please do respond. It is very important." I had reported that the contracted, the union contract, final contracts, we had, we agreed on our memorandum of understanding, MOA of agreement, back in November. I finally received the final full contracts, and they have all been fully executed. And those are three-year contracts, so you won't hear about those again for a little while. Red Hook Library, I was not able to attend their, their March board meeting. They do have information on their website. Go to redhooklibrary.org/boredtrustees, and you'll find their board packet there. I attended the Red Hook Together meeting, the April meeting, was held on April 10th, and it was hosted by the Red Hook Central School District in their Innovation Center at the Linden Avenue Middle School. The Innovation Center is on the second floor and has recently been renovated with new flexible movable furniture and paint, and apparently bright colored paint is a new thing for the school, so they were excited about that. This allows for lots of flexibility to use the room in many different ways. Was quite fun as more people came in, they brought another table over and added to the table, so we were a perfect example. The meeting was an opportunity for those attending to share upcoming events and information. I'm not going to share all of that now, but I do want to make a note that several staff members from Family Services were in attendance. They reported on their new outpatient mental health clinic being located in Northern Duchess. It's going to be at the old Pet Country Store, which is across, was across from Phantom Gardener. They hope to start construction soon. They expect to be open sometime next year. They're currently looking to see what other services might be able to be included in that space. So that is an exciting development for bringing mental health services back to Northern Duchess. And I think, oh, and then I have the Public Spaces Initiative. There, I have the agenda from the meeting that I, I did not attend. I will be the, the village liaison going forward. I did have a meeting with Ash Ricard, who is the chair of this committee, and we talked about the structure and, and the, I, I did manage to find when the, when this committee came into being, and there is no resolution, there really was no authorization. And so this is a great opportunity to work with Ash and the committee. And also, we have been meeting as a separate task force for the Abraham's Park, but this really falls directly underneath the Public Spaces Initiative. So at the next meeting, I'll have more of an update on, on that. And with that, I think I'm done with my.
Thank you.
So that's Sawfield. Oh, yes, sorry, sorry. I knew, I knew I was forgetting something.
Because I didn't try to say yes.
I can handle it. I know. Thank you. Yes, there it is. Okay, sorry. Sawfield Watershed Community, I'm also going to be taking over for Charlie as the liaison there. The Sawfield Watershed Community held one meeting in the month of February. The focus was on the Benner Road Sawfield Tributary water quality and concerns with a visit from Zoe Evans, representing the Sawfield Tributary Coalition at Benner Creek. The agenda is reprinted below. And just to share for those of you who, we did have a meeting here to discuss the wastewater treatment plant situation last Tuesday, and we have another, another meeting, May 1st. I can report that there is improvement. We still have a ways to go, but there is improvement from two weeks ago. And just to clarify, we, well, again, I just said that, so, so it, that's all, enough, and that's it for me.
So it'll be another info meeting, right? Not a special?
That will be an info meeting, yes, correct. It's not, not a special meeting. Okay, Deputy Mayor Carvalho.
Okay. So this is my first time doing the building department, so bear with me. Building permits issued, 12. Certificates of occupancy issued, one. Temporary certificates of occupancy, zero. Certificate of compliance, four. Municipal searches, two. Orders to remedy, one at 7484 South Broadway for signage, and one at 2931 Thompson Street for work without a building permit. Oh, that was a stop work order, apology. There was no do not occupy notices and no court appearances. There were four complaints. Do I read out the individual complaints?
I think we did.
Okay.
You can do it, everyone.
7484 South Broadway, an illuminated window sign too large, which is remedied. 7437 South Broadway, smoke detector, carbon monoxide issue, that was remedied. And 25 East Market Street signage issue, under review. And then lastly, 6 Elizabeth Street, a new structure issue, remedied. And there were four fire inspections. Planning Board actions on March 13th, 2025. One site plan and public hearing for St. John Street table to April 10th, 2025. A site plan and signage for 8 East Market Street was approved for retail use at Aqua Tech. A site plan for 7357 South Broadway table to April 10th, 2025, for the McGurelli Farm Stand. And then at the March 27th, 2025 Zoning Board Appeals Meeting, there was no agenda, and there was just minute approval from a prior meeting. And then the revenue from building permits was $1,569.50 for this month.
Just to, yeah, just to clarify, it's not just building permits? It's all, all the receipts in the building department is probably the way to say that.
Okay, so then on to my other reports. Village of Red Hook Communications. The spring seasonal services update was sent out to water customers and is available online at redhookvillage.org/192/seasonalservices-updates. Also, the mayor sent out her latest newsletter on April 7th. Visit redhookvillage.org/newsletter to subscribe or access an archive of past newsletters. The mayor and I reviewed trustee Bradley Ricard's proposed communications policy, and we agreed that many of the identified goals outlined align with what the village is already doing or has been working towards. Some suggested policies and procedures require more consideration. Further discussion was tabled due to other. Further discussion was tabled due to other pressing communications requests. We discussed the Sawkill Collective's request for a dedicated webpage that houses monthly reports and relevant updates. I've worked with the mayor and the village sewer clerk, Jen Kavanaugh, to organize and extract monthly reports from meeting minutes and upload and organize information onto a dedicated page at the time of this report titled Sewer Operations. Resident Cat Viega inquired if the village's reported concern form could create automated replies that would be triggered by whichever category the user selects as an indicated problem category. I've submitted a help request to Civic Plus Support to see if this feature is supported, as I could not find any mention of it in the request tracker help documentation. And they got back to me they did not. Our IT provider, CMI Tech Incorporated of Kingston, New York, successfully transferred village emails to the new.gov URL. Now village emails end in redhookvillage.gov. We are continuing to navigate the process of getting the redhookvillage.gov address applied to the village website. We have failed to successfully connect our Civic Plus website platform customer rep with our IT provider and are hopeful to have an update on that soon. This year, there's a plan to update the appearance of the Civic Plus website with a full website redesign. As we prepare ourselves for that project, we will be beginning to update and reconfigure existing content and menus to better reflect changes that have happened since the last major organization project took place four years ago. And I mean, organization project as in the website reorganization. The Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee meets every Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM in the Village Hall Conference Room. The latest meeting was held on Thursday, April 3rd, 2025. Committee member Linda DuVall and I met with Heather Boigle over Zou on Tuesday, March 25th. We discussed promotion of the meeting in May, her discussions with historic Red Hook and her anticipated research scheduled when she travels to New York in May. To that end, historian Heather Boigle, in conjunction with the committee, will be holding an Indigenous History Project Gathering Tuesday, May 13th at 7:00 PM in the Red Hook Village Hall courtroom. Join us for a brief Indigenous History presentation, explanation of the project, and add any thoughts that you may have. Questions about the event can be sent over email to mkarvel@redhookvillage.gov. At the monthly meeting, in light of all the village committees being formally formed by the village board, the committee discussed requesting that the committee be renamed to include the word community to better reflect the projects the committee has successfully implemented. For context, the Human Relations Committee was initially launched from the 2021 Police Reform Plan. The committee reviewed the police reform goals a year out from the Plan Adoption Progress Report in 2022, created and organized and installed the Inside Out We Are Neighbors Portrait Project exhibit in 2023, initiated the Red Hook Indigenous History Project 2021 to the present, and contributed to some of the conversations that led to the eventual coordination of the 2024 Warming Shelter Pilot Program at St. Christopher's Church. The committee was also instrumental in the early work of the quantifying language access needs in both the library and village operations in preparation for the grant that the village board applied to in 2022. Also discussed was the suggestion of removing advocacy, communication, and education from the mission as those fall outside the role of an advisory committee and attempts in those areas had not been successfully realized. Namely, a community survey in 2021 did not receive any results and a bystander brochure, which was discussed in 2023, was never developed. Linda DuVall highlighted that being inclusive of everyone in the community has been a central theme in the committee's past work and hopefully that would continue to be included in a future mission. Also discussed was the idea of how relationship building and listening through various formats could be somehow part of our mission, although how that is defined and what is useful to the board would be up to the board collectively. Trustee-elect Frances Uku attended, sorry, Uku, attended the April meeting as a guest and suggested the idea of celebrating a community member and/or senior citizen each month with a profile telling their story and possibilities for collaboration on a project like that. The concept of celebrating individual community members' experiences through storytelling has been a repeated theme in the discussions that have not yet been pursued. And then there's a copy of the flyer that was approved by the mayor for the gathering. And I think that's it, right? I don't have anything else, so I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Bradley Ricard.
So, these are my reports for March. I will be reporting, this is my final Village Green Committee report as Frances Uku will be taking over, but I just want to say I'm super excited to be passing on the committee to Fran. I know it's where she started and I handed off at our last meeting yesterday and they're excited to work with you.
Thank you.
So, kudos to that. But for my March report, planting is almost here. It's actually scheduled for this Saturday. And this last month, we secured our final spots for spring planting. The committee canvassed and did outreach to our residents, trying to recruit some new members to the committee and are all set for the next meeting, which will address the preparation for our planting day itself and other goals for the upcoming year. A reminder that the Village Green needs once a quarter and works on diversifying the tree canopy and is working toward providing helpful information to our residents about how to protect their own trees. Two representatives from Village Green Committee went to the annual Tree Cities Luncheon, where we were honored in our 23rd year as a Tree Cities. The DEC gave a presentation on the governor's 25 million tree planting effort and the town is already promoting the use of DEC's Tree Tracker, so that would be a fun thing for the village to work on and could be a great project for the upcoming year. Hank Fran, Tree Tracker. Any tree planted since January 2024 can be counted and the goal is 25 million trees by 2033. We are actively recruiting members. If you're interested in joining, I said contact me at the time I wrote this. I was still the liaison, so please ignore that and contact Fran or the village clerk. And then I'm adding one more thing that's not in there. Before being a Village Tree City, the village is required to have an Arbor Day proclamation. And the mayor said it was okay for me to read it at tonight's meeting, finalizing my role as liaison. So, the Arbor Day proclamation for 2025, Village of Red Hook, whereas the mayor and Board of Trustees recognize the last Friday in April as Arbor Day in the Village of Red Hook, New York, and whereas the Village of Red Hook, New York, is celebrating that it has been recognized as completing its 23rd year as a Tree City USA, and whereas the estimated annual benefits improved air quality, energy savings, CO reduction, aesthetics produced by our village's trees as determined by the 2009 Street Inventory is over $75,000 per year. Now therefore be resolved that I Kim Bradley Ricard, trustee of the Village of Red Hook and liaison to the Village Green Committee, ex-leazon to the Village Green Committee, do here my proclamation that 25th day of April 2025 as Arbor Day and urge all residents to observe this day by planting trees which are appropriate for the area, track their plantings by using the Tree Tracker as recommended by Gov. Narhokol's 25 Million Trees by 2033 Initiative and by participating in Arbor Day programs. And that proclamation is dated today, April 14th.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Which of the two representatives that went to the annual luncheon?
Tara and Brenda Kegel.
Okay, great, that might be.
Yes, Brenda.
And you mentioned that tree planting is this coming Saturday?
Yes, tree planting is Saturday. We have 10 trees that are going to be planted around the village. They are meeting at Municipal Lot. If you guys want to join, bring some shovels, bring some gloves. There will be a small luncheon that Fran is going to be organizing as her step into the liaison for Village Green. And all are welcome to attend.
And when I checked the weather report, I think it's supposed to be 72 degrees. There might be a few raindrops, but 72 and rain is much better than not snow.
Should be a good day. Yeah, we're lucky it wasn't this Saturday.
What a difference a week can make. Okay, Kim, that's it, right?
No, I've got sewer and...
Oh, sorry, of course you do. Sorry.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so for the next is the sewer. We have the C3 and D lab reports. This is for the month of February, which was before us terminating our contract with them. So, our CBD samples, which is one of the requirements at the old plant, was 15 milligrams per liter and the new plant was 62 milligrams per liter. The compliance is five milligrams, so clearly both plants are over. TSS 13.7 milligrams per liter for the old plant and 110 milligrams per liter for the new plant. The compliance limit for that is 10 milligrams. Both are over. NH3, I don't know what that stands for, but NH3 in...
Oxygen.
The old plant is 4.9 and the new plant is 58.2. And there's a range of limitations between time of year. So, for November 1st through May 31st, the limit is 1.81. Both are over. For fecal coliform, the old plant is 2,420 over 100 milliliters and that reported for both. And the limit for that is 200. The dissolved oxygen is 2 milligrams per liter and 2.3, old and new respectively. The minimum for that is a minimum of seven, so we are under there or we're under the meeting compliance. And TK in a 7.8 milligrams and 58.2 milligrams per liter. And the minimum compliance level there is .4. Again, these are from February of 2025. And then there's the daily average flows, which the Red Hook plant was 36,000 gallons per day, monthly average flow. And yeah, that's the report from C3 and D. And then my report on that is in March, there were some strains with setbacks, so this report is based on what happened in March. The village pressed the operator to send copies of all notices of violations where necessary. And remembering that lab results are a month behind, an NLV was confirmed to be sent for the month of February, which happened before a calculated dump of mixed liquor was added to help engage the bugs. There were still mechanical issues in relation to the UV lights and so chlorine treatment, a standard treatment process, was authorized to continue to be used in the tanks. And working through the to-do list, the crew was able to get the necessary tanks emptied and begin to start work on the list of the necessary repairs that came out of the audit as well as connect the EQ tank to the odor control system, which needed the ground to thaw. At the alternating meeting, we discussed not moving forward with the RFP process and a shift to a new direction for the operation and maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant. We continued to meet with the representative from New York Rural Water Association, who has experience with sewer code and functionalities of wastewater treatment plants in general. And in the month of March, the contract with C3 and D, as are operated for both water and sewer, was terminated. And as of March 31st, the village engaged Delaware Engineering, fully accredited and certified to be our operator. And these actions were solidified at the board's workshop at the end of March. As Delaware is familiar with the plant and with aiding in addressing malfunctioning plants, their goal is to break it down to brass tacks and start from scratch in learning what is in particular the system needs and how to get it up to snuff. Delaware worked on a plan to attack the plant with more testing of influence to see if we're bringing something into the plant that's causing the uneven or unhealthy bug environment. And additionally, they were poised to go in on day one and do a full assessment of the plant itself. And I will say that they had like five or six engineers on the ground in the plant on day one. It is a priority to make sure that we have a fully functioning and operating wastewater treatment plant. And I acknowledge that residents are duly concerned about the operations of the plant and it will take time, but I'm trusting in the new team to whip the plant into shape so that we can move forward. The sewer team meets every other Friday. If you have concerns or comments related to the wastewater treatment plant or sewer use area, please don't hesitate to reach out. So, that's sewer. Village speed limit, there's been nothing, no new developments on that end. For the Town of Red Hook Greenland Trails Committee, the March meeting covered proposed road signage, safety measures for the Sawkill Trail to alert drivers that there will be people on the roads as the trail connects on and through the roads. There were some repair and maintenance updates, such as repainting the sharrows and also adjusting the culvert bridge to accommodate tractors and mowers more easily, but both are weather dependent. The committee is actively working on promoting trails as off-road and safer options for traveling between schools and neighborhoods and working through educational material to send out regarding the rules of the roads and trails, such as road safety, looking both ways, walking against traffic and riding with traffic, et cetera. In upcoming dates, for importance for them is the ribbon cutting event for the Sawkill Phase Two Trail, which is held by Winnicke Land Trust. And that's going to be Saturday, April 26th. It's a busy day, that day, at 1:30. So, mark your calendars. It is in conjunction with the Rail to Trail Conservancy National Trails Day. For, I'm going to take some more, because this is, sorry. For the Climate Smart Communities Task Force, the task force continues to meet monthly, typically on the third Thursday of the month. However, in April due to spring break, the committee actually met a week earlier, April 10th, at Village Hall. Feel free to join us if you're interested for future meetings. We received updates on the Red Hook High School's compost program, which is currently only in their kitchens. And we talked about the village's compost program that will be launching later this spring. And as a quick refresher, especially for our new trustees, we received a grant from the county to start a new food waste drop-off collection site here in the Municipal Lot. And this will be a 24-hour, seven days a week, 365-day food waste hub, meaning that residents who are signed up for the program will have access to the food drop whenever they want. And residents are urged to express interest now. And once the program goes live, you can register for it. After residents register, they'll be provided with instructions on how to move forward to officially be signed up for the village's compost program. The idea is that there's going to be a shed where you can drop your food waste and it will be locked because it's 24-hour access. And so, everyone who signs up for the program will get a code so they can unlock the shed, drop their food waste and move forward. That way, we don't have to pay for anybody to actually oversee or work the station itself. Residents will receive complimentary countertop compost bins while supplies last and the food waste hub drop-off site will be in the Municipal Lot. If you're interested in being informed about the new initiative, please reach out to myself or the clerk's office. And a subcommittee, although I guess, a group of, a group of the Climate Smart Committee did some research into the Safe Reds to Schools program and what it entails and was happy to learn that the village had already engaged with an engineer to work on a speed limit and is interested in looking into a school zone. We discussed the upcoming tour to Red Hook that's being organized by the Red Hook Public Library and could be used as a chance to get some residents canvassing regarding bike pedestrian use of roads to and around the school specifically, as that's the route. And additionally, it's a great opportunity to engage residents about particular programs. Specifically, they were looking at the Safe Reds to School program. In the meantime, they're tasked with compiling a list of action items to recommend to the board for consideration prior to moving forward on action items for the CSC program. And then in March, I attended the CAC Roundtable Event hosted by Duchess County Planning and Development at Cornell Crawford Extension Duchess Campus. And a few days later was at the Third Annual Climate Summit held at SUNY Orange. And both provided great opportunities to discuss with experts in the areas and other municipalities what they're doing to address climate change and any hiccups they foresee along the way, especially with current federal administration and funding concerns. Additionally, met with volunteers who are in similar task force and committees and the work that they're doing within their committees and task force. Task force meetings are open to the public and are actively recruiting members. If you're interested in joining the task force or just sitting in, feel free to reach out to me or check the village's calendar for upcoming meetings. And as I said earlier, our April meeting was moved forward due to spring break. However, the next meeting will be the third Thursday of the month at 4:00 PM at Village Hall in May 15th. Initially, the committee has interest in sort of broader environmental issues and is looking into broadening beyond just a task force and into an actual environmental committee, per se. Events of interest for the Climate Smart Communities, there's a film screening of Legion on Monday, April 21st at 6:30, hosted by Sustainable Hudson Valley. There's the Repair Cafe on Saturday, April 26th at the Red Hook Community Center and that is from 10 to 1. The Tour to Red Hook will be Sunday, May 4th. And Drive Electric Vehicles Demo is May 10th from 1:00 to 4:00 at Red Hook Town Hall. And the other event that I did not put on here is also on April 26th, hence why it's a busy day. But the towns, the town is celebrating their Arbor Day and has their Arbor Day Festival at Town Hall from 10 to 2 on April 26th.
Can I ask a question?
You sure can.
In the draft meeting notes?
Yes.
There's two things underneath the Tour to Red Hook, one of which is a bike rodeo, bike tune-up station and free helmets. Is that happening as far as you know? And are they coordinating with the RHPD? When we did the bike rodeo two years ago, RHPD gave out, they have a lot of, anyway, it's not in the event, so if that's a coordination that needs to happen.
I, as far as I know, I don't know that is actually happening anymore. It was discussed because it had been previously brought up. I'm not on the plan for the Tour to Red Hook, so I don't actually know.
Just because it's weird. Yep. The other thing which is relevant also to your Climate Smart, the mayor and I for New York Forward went into the schools, well, Lambs and the high school with a giant map of the village and poster notes. And the students did indicate, so I have data on where they would like pedestrian crosswalks and bike lanes. Unfortunately, their bike lane requests as well as their Jersey Mike's requests are not likely to happen, but we do have...
We got Catalinas now, so it helps out.
We didn't have Catalinas.
I know, we did that today.
Anyway, so there is data there. If that becomes of interest.
That's when I discovered the cheap snacks are at CVS.
Yeah.
I did not know that, per se, that's not where I get my snacks. I'm also not a middle schooler either, so.
Not a requirement.
With an easy walking distance. Okay. Is that it?
Yeah, that is it.
Okay. Next up is trustee Uku.
Yeah, that's me. Hello, good evening. So, I have, firstly, I wanted to thank trustee Charlie Lang for his village, his monthly reports. I will be reporting on materials management and he has... I will be reporting on materials management, and he has left some helpful legible version of what I'd be reading from the charts. So I thank him for that and intend to continue the format. So for materials management, I have in the month of March, the Village Highway Department collected 2.7 tons of recycling, 0.85 tons of commingled, 0.73 tons of cardboard and 1.19 tons of paper. And the village collected 5.33 tons of garbage, which was transported to Yucra, Kingston, at a total cost of $764.54, 52 cents, excuse me, $719.55 in tipping fees and $44.97 of fuel surcharge. The village also paid $211.12 in monthly fees for use of the Royal Dumpster Service. Over the course of the month, the village collected $2,979 from the sale of garbage tags, broken down as follows, $2,235 at Village Hall, $144 from the Red Hook Public Library, and $600 from Taste Buds. Yes, okay. Since I have it on this page, this is something for Kim. And so just to back up, I received an email from Alia Murray, who is with the Red Hook Repair Cafe. So I just wanted to echo again because she wanted me to invite all who are free and interested to the Repair Cafe, April 26th from 10 to 1 at the Red Hook Community Center.
It's good fun.
Mm-hmm. I have a lot of things I will be bringing.
It's a day.
Yeah. Okay. And so I also have the Public Works Highway Department Monthly Report with some seasonal updates. The village tree pruning and/or removal is beginning, and damaged or ailing trees in the village right of way have been identified and marked with pink marking tape. So if you see that on any trees on your property, do not be alarmed. Street sweeping will take place in the last week of April or first week of May. Please sweep or rake sand and gravel from the lawn edges onto the side of the street, dispersed in a row, not in a large pile, to facilitate cleanup by the street sweeping machines. Yard waste pickup of lawn clippings and brush resumes in April, of which we've had the first round. Thank you, Jake, for that. So yeah, in the scrap metal program, I have reports revenue received as of 31st of March 2025. Since the last report was $726. Total revenue this, for this fiscal year from June 2024 to May 2025 to date is $4,822.90. And since the program's inception in September 2007, donations have yielded a total of $59,685.74, which is pretty awesome. Proceeds from the program go towards the purchase of tools and equipment for the Public Works Department. And so residents and businesses interested in donating metal may contact the village corp's office to schedule a pickup. It's very important. We appreciate it. Am I also going, shall I go through the, our pickup rules? It's, this info is in. And yes, and that's me.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have trustee Smith.
Water.
That's me. I'm sorry. That's okay. So, yeah, exactly. I reiterate Fran's thanks to Charlie, as I inherit his water department. So this is a report compiled on April 9th. During the month of, during the month of March, the water treatment facility treated 7,893, 291, 893,000, 291 gallons, an average of 254,622 a day. All bacteriological samples for the month were collected and the analysis is done at York Analytical in Newton, Connecticut. All three locations had an absence for coliform and E. coli, which is a good thing. During March, the water treatment plant used 75 gallons of sodium hypochlorite. And that is, this is a more broken down numbers on that. The utility billing report for the water slash sewer department is also me. There were $204,135.13 of utility bills issued. There were $505.66 penalties or finance charges issued. We received in March $8,406.23 in payments. Outstanding owed to the village is $220,816.33. There were no billing, bill adjustments. Thank you, Jen. In future, I will also do the events committee report. The events committee did not meet in March because the date conflicted with another village meeting.
Okay. That looks like, all right. Now, any other general business of anybody?
There's one report that I did not read out because I did not flip over Charlie's thing. So I just have one lingering.
Go.
I apologize.
Go for it.
The Community Preservation Fund Committee. I am not a member of that committee, but it is in my assignments to follow up. No meetings in the month of March. The current balance of the CPF is $3,066,000. No, that's, yeah, $467. Sorry. That's it. Those numbers.
Yes.
Thank you. Good to, good to know. So that, that fund was used and is building back up. Any other general business? Anybody wants to add this evening? If there's none, now is the time for public comment. Anyone would like to comment on anything, please.
Hi, Paul LaGuardia, 18th Street. You spoke earlier about the good news of the new testing, and I'm guessing that was from Delaware. You got some, I'm sorry, the village sewer, sewage treatment plant. You got some new tests and you said it was good news and the results were favorable?
I would, I would characterize that slightly differently. Improvements are being made.
Improvements are being made. Okay. I'm guessing that was from testing. It sounded like some tests were done.
It's a combination of, they do, they do certain testing every day.
Okay.
And then they do, they will take samples and send it out to a lab. They're doing that weekly right now.
Okay. And that's Delaware?
Delaware is the one who's coordinating that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you got it. Hopefully on May 1st, we will have, have specific information to share. Unfortunately, right now, the testing isn't what it needs to be, but we're.
Well, the information.
Certainly the discharge is looking significantly better. It actually looks clear. Doesn't mean it is clear, but it's looking clear.
And is it shared during these meetings or will there be someplace we can access it maybe electronically?
So the tricky, the tricky part is that the, the report that we shared was for February.
Yeah.
So it's a little far behind. I'm not sure how quickly we'll be able to update. So we, we hope to go live with the website page with all of the past reports. How quickly we'll be able to upload those, we'll, we'll have to figure that out. But, but yeah, that's the, the whole idea is to have that information so that you can find it easily.
And that was the, what deputy mayor was reporting on the webpage.
Yes, exactly.
So that ties it. Thank you.
She's also the one who has created it, so.
Oh, thanks.
We are grateful for her talents.
Oh, yeah.
For sure. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, Sharon?
Might as well rock the boat.
Please.
You would, I know you were here.
Name and address, please.
George Beekman, 15 Cherry Street.
Thank you.
He used to be the zoning.
Chair.
Chair. Yeah. 25 years in that.
Lara misses you.
Yes. Well, I don't miss it anymore. For many years, when they were planning this, this project, the sewer project, I fought with the board, totally against it. I wondered, one of the things I wondered about was just what's happening now. It's a high maintenance program. It's not a sewer system. And I'd like to see at least a two-year moratorium on any expansion until you, until the system's proven. Because I think there's more problems coming down, down the road on this there. Then you're going to cripple the entire village if you would do, if you went to that level. So it just, I told him, I was right. I'm telling you, I told you also not to hook up with the town because there'll be lawsuits. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sharon?
Yeah, Kat Vega, 20 Cambridge Drive. Again, do you know when you'll get the inspection report back? And also to the comment about the moratorium, do you have some defined parameters for how long you expect it to need to be working before you decide that an expansion is okay? Personally, I think no expansion should be considered at this point, given the whole history and the way that that landscape cannot bear any more wastewater flowing through it. But what are your defined parameters for deciding that you feel like it's okay to proceed?
I don't have a full answer for you at this point. And, you know, thank you, thank you for the questions. We're obviously working with, with, with experts, with our engineers. Any expansion of our Speedy's permit would have to be approved by DEC, which that's, that's what they do, is determine what's, what's, what a, what a discharge location can take. So all of that would be part of, part of what's included. So I'm certainly not an expert, so I wouldn't be the one to determine. And that's why we're working with, with experts as we go forward. So certainly will be questions that we'll keep in mind and we'll report out as we go. We have a ways before we're going to be expanding. And I think the question of a moratorium is a, is an appropriate one that we will consider. Yeah.
Is there a penalty if you get grant funding and then decide that we're not going to move on with the grant and you decline the grant money? Or do you get like in the way back of the line or are they nice to you?
I would, well, again, it's not ideal to, to turn it down, but you can always do that. And I, you know, they don't charge you for turning it down. They might think twice if you apply again or ask for different parameters, but I, I can't say that I've had that experience, so.
In my experience, it depends on the funder. But generally speaking, if your reason for declining is because the project is not, is no longer considered tenable, they would rather not see their money used for something that wasn't tenable. So there's no, no penalty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Any other comments?
Just one last one. I, I noticed that that tributary area is a defined area of focus for the Community Preservation Fund plan. And so I'm wondering, how is that, you know, meshed with this idea to, you know, expand with wastewater going on it if it's supposed to be more of a protected area? And also to that point, it looks like there's recent changes to the laws for the Freshwater Wetlands Act that might actually bump that up to a Class 1, which is entitled to more protections. So if those things change, will you consider pulling back these efforts in an effort to maintain, you know, the plan of naturalization, protecting wetlands and naturalized areas in this community?
Well, presumably that's the role of the DEC. They wouldn't give us an expanded permit if they, if, if they felt that that would hurt the area based on what they know of that area, et cetera. So that's, that's their job to, to make that determination. So that's part of the process.
But it's not their job for the Community Preservation Fund piece as a defined area?
I guess I'll thank you for your comment and we'll, we'll take that into account and maybe charge the deputy mayor to understand what that, what that would mean.
That's a town, that's a town.
A town says so.
Yeah.
Right, but it's in coordination with the village and it's part of the village.
Yeah, no, they, I mean, they have a list of areas that they.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, there's areas that are, have been identified in the village, but what I'm saying is the village board doesn't decide anything in that.
No, but understanding, but understanding what.
Totally. I'm just saying that if you have concerns, it's a good, you know, you can always.
You can take it to the.
Yeah, as well.
Absolutely. Great. Any other comments? Sharon?
I appreciate the road being done finally. Six months it took.